Hello, welcome to the Town Manager Download, a podcast about local government in the town of Shrewsbury. Today's podcast is going to cover all things town meeting, both in general and as it's related to Shrewsbury. Later, we will be joined by our guest, Jim Kane, former Select Board member and the town's current moderator. I'm Kevin Mizikar, the Town Manager of the town of Shrewsbury, and as always, I'm joined by Principal Department Assistant Taylor Galusha. How's it going, Taylor?
It's February 27th.
It is. Time is flying and we are moving off of the winter, or moving into winter finally, I think.
Well, we thought we had spring for like a week and then we're getting hit with every snowstorm we didn't get in December and January.
Right. Yeah, the last few days have been a mix of ice and snow and some more notable, although very manageable, storms are on the horizon for this week, so we'll see how those play out. It's been good in one way, for me at least. I've gotten some time skiing with my kids over their winter break, which was a lot of fun. Despite how warm it's been, conditions were still really good. So we were at Watch Housit, so I tip my hat to those folks up there that have been making snow when they could and keeping conditions well, which was a lot of fun. So, which made it a lot of fun. What have you been up to?
I was at Paint Your Own Pottery yesterday for five hours.
Oh, wow. You painted a lot of pottery.
We painted, me and my friend Catrata, we went at 12:15. It's Paint Your Own Pottery in Northborough. And we were there for five hours doing one piece each. And I didn't think it would take us five hours, but I didn't, I don't think the owner was judging us, but there was a kid's birthday party going on in the background of it. But it was very fun. I made a teapot.
Nice. Turned out good?
I don't know. We'll see in a week.
Oh.
The week for it to get all glazed and shiny.
That's awesome.
Yep. It was a good time.
So for me, also NASCAR season has started. I know a lot of people know that I'm a NASCAR fan. And so there's two races under the belt already for the season, which has been moderately interesting, so.
I watched the Daytona 500.
That's good.
With my dad.
I mean, I do admit.
I hate the last like minute of, five minutes of the race or whatever, the overtime thing.
Yeah. There can be times when racing is not that exciting to watch on TV, but it's the whole experience. So that season's off and running. And I guess that means we're cruising into budget season and town meeting season, which happens to be our main topic for today. So we'll get into that in a minute.
What's up in the shoe?
Always a lot. Of course, everyone can still get their strategic plan. Can be picked up at the Town Hall, the Library, or Council on Aging. So we're actually going through a lot of those. So I think we're going to tell people they need to rush in and get it before we run out of the first printing of it. So they can have an original, first edition.
I know. Should I put Edition 2 on the next one so people know?
We might have to. Because Edition 1 is going to be much more valuable.
Right. When we resell it in 50 years.
Right.
And Police Station's finally open.
Yeah, Police Station is open. That's always an interesting endeavor. There's, as everyone can appreciate, really technical components with switching dispatching over. And it has to be done absolutely right. And we kind of co-dispatch with the town of Boyleston. So thank you to them for allowing us to operate out of there for a short amount of time. But those companies come in and state entities and federal entities come in and switch us over. And then we started operating there last Thursday. And everything has been going really well. And our side of the parking lot's a lot more open. So it's easier to find a parking space at the Town Hall, which is good for us for now. Until they start the demo of the existing station and some additional underground infrastructure work that'll be going on in that area. But yeah, it's awesome to see them over there and hopefully they're getting accustomed to their new space. And it's also tax season.
Yes. From my fill-in spell at the treasure collector's office, I can appreciate how exciting this news is probably for them. There's a new bill inquiry portal that the treasure collector launched. So it's through their webpage. You can find the link to it. So you'll be able to look up your current, or most current information related to real estate, taxes, excise taxes, and your utility information. A lot of the phone calls that I used to help with when I was over there and that they help with now are related to those inquiries. So kind of giving residents the opportunity to be able to look it up and have access to that information whenever they want it. So I think that's exciting.
Yeah, we know a lot of people call and ask those questions on excise and real estate. What did I pay last year when they're doing their own personal income taxes? So this gives them access to it 24/7. They don't, they don't need, they don't need to wait until weekend hours and to catch someone on the phone or wait for a callback. So it's one of the big initiatives that we are working on and will be focusing on for next fiscal years. How can we make more of our business processes self-service? Just like most things that people interact with, with companies or other entities. You can look it up online or do it yourself online, and we're trying to move in that direction as well. Which will be not a big impact, but part of our fiscal year 24 budget. So our initial budget has been presented to both the Select Board and to the Finance Committee. And that happened over the course of the last week or so. And it was a challenging year with inflation and other things that we talked about on prior episodes. But we have the budget initially launched. We finally received numbers from the state with regards to the budget and state aid from the new governor, which we seem to be well positioned for. Doesn't mean we got a lot of additional money, but our planning and forecasting that we've done meant that we're right in the ballpark. So thanks to our staff for having great forecasting and the ability to know what to anticipate properly. So we're clearly in the budget process and we'll be moving into the formal public hearing part of that in about a month, nearly end of March with the Finance Committee. So that's what's been going on, always a lot and never a dull moment. We'll keep folks informed about the budget process and everything else as we launch additional episodes in the future. So I think that takes us into what we're really here to talk about today, which is town meeting and other matters.
Yep. As we said before, our town meeting is our Super Bowl, so.
It is our Super Bowl.
We're getting ready. We're in the training, I don't know, not training camp. We're at a training camp, but.
Right. Moving into that critical time to see if we make the playoffs. How about that?
Right. Yeah, I think that's the better word for it. So at the Select Board's meeting tomorrow night, they'll be setting the time and place, time, place, and date for town meeting. But I think it's important we talk about what town meeting is and what the relationship between town meeting and all the areas of local government, how we come together with town meeting twice a year to make government work.
Yeah, this is what makes us really unique in New England. Town meeting is our legislative body. So predominantly across the country is what's known as the council manager form of government. And council manager form of government is a city or town council, normally made up of seven to nine individuals who serve as the legislative body. And then the manager is the appointed executive. So no mayor, but so a council of, a body of five to seven to nine people doing all the legislative work and the town manager doing all the executive work. In our form of government, we have, town meeting is our legislative body. And our Select Board, five members actually, is the elected executive branch. And they appoint the town manager position that has the specific title of Chief Administrative Officer rather than Chief Executive Officer, which is the case in the council manager form of government. So we're quite unique and we're unique among the unique here in Shrewsbury because of how we conduct town meeting.
Yep.
We actually are one of less than 50 communities.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. That's what I learned from my MMA class. Thirty-three.
So thirty-three communities of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts have representative town meeting as opposed to open town meeting. So open town meeting, if you're a registered voter within that community, that means that you can go to town meeting and you can vote as part of their legislative body. However, in Shrewsbury and those other 32 communities, you have to be elected to be a part of a representative town meeting in that you're representing your fellow citizens as part of the town's legislative body. And the only real test in Massachusetts, in order to move from open town meeting to representative town meeting, is that you have to have at least 6,000 residents to do that. So pretty low bar in 2023 in order to move in that direction. However, still, it's been quite some time since any community has moved from open to representative form of government, which is, which is interesting. It takes a charter change and that election through the state legislative process. But plenty of, there's probably more towns that are eligible for it that don't have it than the opposite.
Right. And it's a nonpartisan body too.
It is a nonpartisan body, just like all other local elections. So you don't run on the basis of Democrat, Republican, Independent, Green, whatever a party you affiliate with. It's really supposed to be in the interest of you and your fellow residents. And those kind of Democrat and Republican type conversations are not things that really influence what goes on at town meeting. It's really, again, everything's based upon the best interest of the town as a local government and how we serve our residents.
Right. And we have, it's about, I think, a spread between eight and nine, or no, eight and 10 town meeting members per voting precinct in town. And that's dictated on our census, correct?
Right. So we have, we have 10 total precincts in town. And residents are, excuse me, town meeting representatives are divided up on a per capita basis among those. The state law says that you cannot have a voting precinct that has greater than 4,000 people. So that's why we have 10, right? 30,000 residents. So that means we need to have 10 precincts. If trends continue, by the time we get to the 2040 census, we'll likely have to add the 11th precinct. And then that will kind of really shake things up. It'll be a little bit harder math, dividing by 11 than dividing by 10, but we'll certainly figure it out. But there is variation. You know, the town isn't divided up perfectly among those 10 precincts as far as equal number of population. And we actually look at the number of representatives per precinct every two years. So while we do the census every 10 to determine the total number of precincts, we want to make sure that there is equal representation. So we do that every two years.
So I just got lucky and it happened the same year that we had the census?
Yep. So that's right. So it happens on even years. So in calendar year 24, in January, we'll do it again. And that's another really important reason for everyone to fill out their annual census, which is.
The towns.
The town census that's mailed to you by a town clerk. So not only does that keep you enrolled on the voter rolls, it also allows us to properly allocate town meeting members. So that is different in all those other communities that don't have representative town meeting. But it's, it puts an even greater importance on responding to that here in Shrewsbury. So town meeting being the legislative body has all traditional legislative powers that folks may think about. Always like to compare it, although local government provides the most direct impact. A lot of people understand state and federal powers better than they do local. So if you think about the United States Congress and what the, you know, US House of Representatives is able to do in conjunction with the Senate, although we only have one body, they set the budget, they pass laws. And here in Shrewsbury, it's, they're called general bylaws and zoning bylaws. And we also have a personnel bylaw. The town meeting has the authority over. And then miscellaneous funding. So whether it's, even if it's outside of the operating budget, if we need dollars to do something, that has to go through town meeting to appropriate the funds. So they have the power of the purse. And then other matters like acquiring or disposing of property, requesting special legislation with the state, all needs to flow through our legislative body, which is town meeting. Often whenever I talk to colleagues across the country about how our legislative body works, they pull their hair out literally in front of us and say, how can that be possible? How can, in your instance, 240 and some other cities and towns, in their instances, 1,000 people vote on their budget? Like, how do you get that passed? So it can be a challenge, but you know, different forms of government bring different challenges. And certainly, we have somewhat of a benefit of being able to communicate directly with everyone that we know will be at town meeting, even if everyone doesn't show up. Where, in an open town meeting government and in prior positions that I've held, you're doing your best to generally message what's going to happen at town meeting, but you don't know for sure who's actually going to show up.
Yeah. The town I live in, they mail, I live in an apartment too. So they mail us like little pamphlet, paper pamphlets that, like basically the warrant book, the budget book that you guys get, or all the town meeting members get, they mail to us.
Right.
I mean, I read through it. I don't know how many other people read through it, but I'm always interested.
And so from that standpoint, we only have to do 240 mailings. And some other cities and towns have to try to hit every residential household. In Grafton, whenever I was there, we would actually publish the entire warrant in the Grafton News, which was their local newspaper. So that was our one chance to try to, it's not a perfect system, but get information out to everyone as broadly as possible. So.
Different methods.
Different methods, right. But here, we kind of have the advantage of knowing the individuals that have been elected by their fellow citizens to do this type of work.
And town meetings kind of is not, it kind of, it is a long process. We have a lot of like action items leading up to town meeting. Do you want to just like run through?
Yeah.
What town meeting as a process is?
Yeah. So it being our legislative process and only really having two scheduled town meetings a year, I'll also compare that to that other council manager or council mayor form of government that folks may be familiar with, is that every time, you know, a city council meets, for instance, in the city of Worcester, their legislative body is meeting. So they can adjust bylaws, they can adjust the budget nearly every week of the year. And we only get to do that two times a year. So that means we've put a lot of effort to get everything as right as we possibly can the first time. So it means that we have a really prolonged budget process and we do a lot of public hearings. We try to get all this pre-engagement. So when we get to town meeting, we're rather confident that we have a budget that will pass. The same thing whenever it comes to amending our general bylaws and zoning bylaws. Like the zoning bylaws will go through two public hearings of the Planning Board. But we've really, we really start a list of what may be on the next annual or special town meeting the day after the meeting ends, because that's, we only get, again, one or two shots a year to get it right. And we're also going to be really doing things a little bit more comprehensively at this next annual town meeting. We're going to hopefully work with the moderator and shift the physical layout of the room and try to use more projected information and presentations to help everyone who maybe hadn't had the most opportunity to prepare for the meeting to be informed at the meeting. So it's really a long process before we get to town meeting. And in earnest, department heads have been on alert and made aware over the last 60 days that they have to have any special warrant articles that they want us to consider and the Select Board to consider putting on for that period of time. And that process will wrap up in the middle of March. So it's quite the process for us to get through and means we really plan for those two critical dates throughout the course of the year.
Right. And the warrant passes through the Select Board and then to the Finance Committee.
Right. So the.
For review.
That's right. So the Select Board is officially charged with establishing the warrant. And the warrant, for those who are unfamiliar, is really a list of action items that we want to take. So think of it as the agenda for town meeting. So it would include things like consider the fiscal year 24 budget or consider adjustments to the zoning bylaw. But we have to be very specific. So what those changes would be. And we actually publish the entire budget in advance of the meeting. So once it's signed off on by the executive body, then it goes to the Finance Committee, whose sole job it is to advise of town meeting on the financial impacts of each and every warrant article. And they actually provide an opinion historically in Shrewsbury, whether there's a direct financial impact or not. So they'll vote and say, we recommend or we don't recommend the passage of this warrant article.
Yeah. I'll be honest, when I first got introduced to local government, using the word warrant always confused me. I'm like, there's definitely a better word that could have been used, but.
It's definitely a government term. Like in the federal government, anyone that's responsible for executing a budget is a warrant officer. So they have the ability to sign things. So it's definitely a historical government term that no one understands, of course.
We just explained it though. So now everyone knows.
Right.
And then you also said it gets, zoning gets involved too. So does Planning Board or anyone have hearings on that as well?
Right. So the Planning Board has to have a public hearing before any zoning bylaw changes can be considered by town meeting. And they're charged with making a recommendation to town meeting. And if the zoning, if, if a prior zoning article was before town meeting, it was defeated, the only way that it ever can come back to town meeting is from a favorable vote of the Planning Board. So if someone would bring something and the Planning Board wouldn't recommend it at its first try, it would still go to town meeting for consideration because it's on the warrant. But it can't do that if it's a subsequent try. So if you try to make a change and it's voted down, the only way it can come back to town meeting is if the Planning Board says. Yep. Yep. So.
And like, how can non-town me, we've talked a lot about like hearings and whatnot. How can non-town meeting members be involved in this process? If someone can't commit to doing that or just wants to be informed, how can they participate in the local government?
The entire process that we talked about, whether it's the Select Board developing the warrant, which is done at their public meetings and they receive comment on it, you know, in writing up until they actually sign the warrant. Or there's public hearings that are held under the responsibility of the Finance Committee. So those, all those things up until actual, the actual town meeting itself is open to every registered voter, every citizen in Shrewsbury. So that final day when, or days when town meeting meet, you know, that's just for our representatives. But the entire process before that, we encourage everyone to participate in those very posted and informal public meetings that occur.
And someone can attend town meeting if they're not a town meeting member?
They can. Right. So they can attend, understand what's going on. We've seen that in the past with people who may be interested in becoming town meeting members. It allows them to acclimate themselves and say, well, do I, is this really worth my time? Do I really want to participate this way? Yeah, and they just.
They can do everything but vote.
They can do everything but vote, right? If, if, at the discretion of the moderator, which I'm sure he'll talk about, you know, they could speak as well.
Right. And how does a person become a town meeting member?
Right. So they, they are elected. And we actually had a forum a few weeks ago about how to become a town meeting member. Basically, you need to go to the town clerk's office and request what they call, you know, papers to be, hold an elective office in Shrewsbury. And to become a town meeting, you need 10 verified signatures of registered voters from your precinct. So it's a pretty low bar considering that on average, there's about 3,800 citizens in each and every precinct. And you know, a significant portion of them, about two-thirds are registered voters. So that's the process. And then your name would be on the ballot and those within your precinct would vote for you.
And they have until March 14th, actually, to return those papers. So if someone hears this before March 14th.
Right. So still, you know, enough time and really 10 signatures, including yourself. So if you're, you know, happen to have, you know, at least one or two other voters in your individual household and some neighbors that you're familiar with, it's not a really big hurdle to overcome to become a part of our legislative body in town.
I think an important question is just to be like, why is it important to be involved in your local government?
Right. I mean, so you help control the outcome of the part of government that impacts you the most, right? So this is where we're allocating resources between competing interests. So some people may want to see more playground than park amenities. Some people may want to see more police and firefighters. Some people may want to have more social service programs or funding for education. And, and those all compete for a finite amount of resources. And as we go through the budget process and subsequent warrant articles and considering whether or not we are going to borrow funds for a particular purpose, that authority all rests within town meeting. So this is a very effective and meaningful way that you can be involved. And honestly, even though it's probably the, the most formal way to get involved that has the greatest opportunities, it's only three or four nights a year. So you have to do a little bit of research, get yourself up to speed. But then you have all this authority of passing a budget, passing or authorizing the town to borrow, allowing the town to add, you know, acquire or dispose of land. A lot of, a lot of unique powers that come from this that if you lived in another part of the country, you wouldn't have any opportunity except for voting once a year for your city council or town council member.
I always think back about my time at Merrimack, how like when I used to do orientation for freshmen and incoming students, we always used to tell them how important it is to like find an activity and be involved in your community because it helps to establish that connection and that sense of belonging for where you're living at that point for the next four years. I'll give a shout out to Krista last. She had me read a chapter from a book, but I ended up reading the whole book. It was called, This Is Where You Belong: The Art and Science of Loving the Place You Live by Mel D. Warnock. And there was a chapter just kind of talking about town meeting, or at least being involved in your town government to some degree and helping to foster that sense of belonging. I think volunteering is a good way to do that.
And I think you, you'll see neighbors, you'll see folks that you're familiar with from different, other different community activities, especially if you have students in the school system or used to have students in the school system. So it's a good way to connect with people. And it really does, if you're an active participant, make you feel more part of the community. And, you know, I always encourage when people email me and say they've been elected or have a question, you know, come up to us at the, at the front of the room before or after the meeting or during a break. And let's have a conversation if that's your only opportunity. We're always available to receive questions, whether it's for the official duties of the Town Manager's Office at manager@shrewsburyma.gov or if it's for the Town Manager Download at tmdownload@shrewsburyma.gov. So if you have any questions about town meeting or the process or other ways to get involved, we always encourage you to reach out to us.
Definitely. I love seeing everyone chatting during town meeting, just neighborliness and community.
Exactly.
Warm and fuzzy.
Definitely.
And we don't have any resident questions this week, but you already gave us a little shout out, so.
I guess that takes us into what should be an exciting second segment of our conversation about town meeting. We bring in the elected official who actually is responsible for conducting a fair town meeting, which is the town moderator, singular elected individual at large across the entire community. And we're happy to welcome Town Moderator Jim Kane to the Town Manager Download. So Jim, welcome. It's a pleasure to have our first elected official, Town Moderator Jim Kane, here with us on the Town Manager Download. Jim, we always like to start each episode with telling folks, having our guests tell everyone about their background, including your various experience with local positions and why you ran for moderator in Shrewsbury. And I know your experience goes to other communities in Mass as well.
Yes. Thank you. Good to be with both of you. I grew up in Marlboro and I grew up in a family which, a variety of people served on appointed or elected positions. My grandfather was on the school committee for, I think, four decades or so. And my father was on the Planning Board and my uncle was on a Planning Board in an adjacent community. So I just grew up with that being part of what you did. I served on the city council for three two-year terms right out of college. And then I took a job in Boston and moved to Boston. And then when we moved to Shrewsbury, now about 25 years ago, I think, 23 years ago, we just got involved at a variety of levels, I suppose. And then I ran for the Board of Selectment and served for enjoyable terms. And then I chose to run for moderator, just to round out my obituary. I figured when, it always interested me because it's a unique role in town government. And when Chris chose to leave, as you may recall, the one out of five on the school committee and the one out of five on the Board of Selectment are up at the same time as the one moderator in our town. So I had always mentioned to him, when you're going to go, I'd appreciate a heads up. So when he chose. So when he chose not to run for reelection, I threw my hat in the ring and I've enjoyed it thus far.
Yeah. It's interesting. So when you were on city council, because we talked about this a little bit earlier, that's the legislative body in Marlboro, right?
There's small cities in Massachusetts. That's right. Very different because you have the elected executive in a, I think it's a plan E form. We have the elected executive, who's the mayor. And then in our case, we had seven wards and four at-large councillors. So you then had 11 people.
Which seat did you hold?
Ward seven and then at-large for two more terms.
Okay.
Sure. That's good.
Yeah. Interesting. So when you're at-large and you're voted in by the whole.
The whole city.
The whole city. Interesting.
That's good.
Yeah. So how do you define the role of moderator? What is the moderator here in Shrewsbury?
Well, the, the role across the state is to ensure that there's an orderly town meeting. So that people with a variety of perspectives are afforded a reasonable opportunity to express those, whether in an elected or an open town meeting. Cause we do have two types in Massachusetts. We are unelected with our 10 precincts, 240 members. Then there are the open town meetings, which I think our friends in Northborough and Westborough enjoy, which tend to see influx coming and going with the number of people who participate at a particular time in an evening because of the nature of the article warrant.
Right.
So it's, that's a different subtlety. But that's our primary role across the state is to just ensure that there's an organized and orderly discussion of the warrant articles. In our town, the moderator appoints the personnel board and the finance committee, and then one member of the Lake Quinn Sigamond Commission.
Yeah. And I think it's somewhat consistent or a traditional role of moderators to have that appointing authority over the finance committee. Do you know the kind of lay on the land?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, it's very interesting. Now that I'm on the board of directors of the Mass moderators.
Of course you are.
There's this thing called the gavel line where people will go out to the various people with decades of service, but it's open to anyone who's a member. And they'll talk about, we have this upcoming question, I believe on town meeting time, you deal with it this way, or what have you.
Interesting.
Yeah, it is. It's a unfiltered conversation between people trying to figure out the best way to deal with something. And I've already seen three cases where the selectmen of a certain community were trying to wrestle away the appointing authority. I believe of just in some towns north of Worcester, the selectmen named the advisory committee, which is the finance committee. So I think if you really push yourself back from the chair and you, you care about this stuff. If you look at the way the town meeting act was written and the town manager act, the folks who did that, I think really did a great job in balancing. There's the, the political aspect over here, there's the policy aspect over here. With the exception of the ZBA, the selectmen really don't appoint, historic district commission. But in terms of dealing with issues in town, the selectmen have very few appointments.
That's true.
Take the politics out.
Right.
Then you give it to one person, the moderator, who can't really be out there on one side or another of any of these issues because they're supposed to play the, the even-handed dealer at town meeting. So I think there's a great balance in our, in our two acts. And frankly, with yours, with what you do, it's very simple. The board of directors, board of selectmen hires you, you run the town. And that way they're not appointing your department heads and this other foolishness that goes on. They all work for you and either things are getting done or they aren't.
Right.
It's very clear. I, I think, I like that clarity in our two key acts.
Now, would you define the, the moderator's role at town meeting as passive? Or what, what term do you like to use? Cause you don't, you don't vote except for in a tie, is my understanding. So. How do you define that?
Well, I tend to think it's to move things along, keep it going. You don't want to hit a flat spot. But keep things moving in an orderly fashion, ensure everybody's had their chance. If three have spoken against and three have spoken for, and there's nothing new, then let's move with the vote unless the body doesn't want to.
Yep.
And then if there's something new or a different, different element of idea coming up, then great. Let it get on the floor as well, as long as it's pertinent.
Sure.
There's always that question of how far you go. And it's sometimes not particularly easy, but there's a, there's a thread of a connection and the person's rather passionate about it. So you, you play that out a little bit. At the last town meeting, we started wandering several parcels over. So we had to come back to the, you know, the, the main issue, the main motion in a technical sense, but.
I like thick, heavy yarn, if that ever comes to mind.
Thick, heavy yarn.
Not tiny little strings. Like things really tied together.
Not filament. Not filament. I understand. Rope.
Yeah, rope. Yeah. Braided rope.
Braided rope.
Yeah. That's, that's how tight we should keep those things tied. So how about leading up to the meeting? What, what do you do outside of those appointing authorities to, to help members prepare?
Well, first of all, you and I will sit and go through the warrant with town council to make sure we're all reading it the same way and interpreting it the same way. I'm shocked the number of towns that don't do that.
Right.
People show up in the evening and town council may or may not be there. The manager or administrator may or may not have talked to the moderator. The selectman will pop up with a new idea, not the way I could do it. So no doubt we'll get together with council in your office, walk through each one, two thirds votes, other such nuanced matters. And then I'll go back through and review all of my stuff, if you will, as moderator on a few evenings, walking through each element. But then ultimately we'll have the pre-town meeting, which is for, intended for new town meeting members to understand how business is conducted. It's not a substitute for a pre-town meeting in terms of, let's have a, a pre-debate on a particular issue.
Right.
That's not the intention. And we'll do that a few nights before, a week before or something in the same hall.
Yeah. Normally that Thursday before.
Yeah.
Trying to talk to folks.
Yep. And, and then you'll get a few questions from people who may or may not have a petition article. Sometimes they'll, I always encourage people to go to the selectmen and have a conversation there before you just assume they won't do it.
Right.
And that way it's always better, I think, to come that route than it is to come in off the street without having even had a, a public conversation about it.
Yeah. That, that's interesting. One of the things that we've taken on recently and it's, it's kind of a, it's very new for us and because we never had a consent agenda before, but we're, this concept of bundling that came up during COVID. So you play a, a big role actually. You determine what gets bundled and what doesn't get bundled. So.
Yeah. During COVID, the great and general court allowed towns to accept certain language and to go and do it and to undertake that bundling of putting things that are somewhat related together. We then took to town meeting the following year and changed language that allows it to occur under our act now. And therefore, again, when we're sitting down, you and I just walk through and take issues. Okay. Water and sewer probably can be handled together. Now, if there was a big project, as there was several years ago, for a new plant, obviously stand alone.
Right.
And then we'll do the operating budget, the capital budget. But generally, if you're going to do work in several sewer pump stations, the same issues are present.
Right.
And as always, we would allow people to, to debate the particulars. But what I've heard from town meeting members is they, they appreciate that. Because people want to go and do their work. They don't want to sit through 154 voice votes on 150 matters when they're really there. There are four that are interesting or different or require some level of public debate.
That, that brings something interesting, Jim, that you and I have talked about. How have you seen town meeting change since you've been involved here in Shrewsbury? On what's debated, what gets the most attention at the meeting? You know, where people really want to talk and where people, I will at least characterize it, seem more comfortable with the day-to-day management of the town.
Yeah. I think it's, I've seen a bit of a change in, what was it, 12, 14 years? A lot of folks who were right of center, slightly right of center are no longer on town meeting. Now, some have simply gotten older and retired or moved or passed. But we then went through a period of time where we had a constant number of petition articles. So I thought we were perhaps trying to compete with the Brookline Town Meeting, which of course leaves greater policy matters to them. So that was a real change. And now we seem to be, I, I don't know, we'll see where we go. I think this is a much more activist town meeting in terms of leaving the basics to the town, but having certain policy goals and objectives. We see that with CPA, where again, just as folks increase their taxes with an override vote, folks increase their taxes with the CPA surcharge. And then you've also seen other particular petition articles where people chose to take on a particular policy that some might argue was better dealt with statewide, but the lack of action on a statewide policy, they chose to take it on the local level. And I think if not on the first pass, on the second pass, I think every one of those, my recollection is they've all been successful.
They have. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that has included so far, plastic shopping bag ban, polystyrene, styrene or styrofoam ban. And then this climate emergency declaration.
Which was much more of a statement. But town meetings supported it, which is certainly up to town meetings.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. That's interesting. So would you say, given those comments, a little less debate on the budget recently than there has been in the past?
I don't think, since I've been moderator for the two budgets we've done, I don't think there's been any real debate. We've gone question by question by question. And there may have been a clarification or a question, but certainly nothing that you would consider to be debate. And I think that's partly because even, I still lament the loss of the daily newspaper because you could get so much information, you, you folks could get so much information out of this board of selectmen, that it's, it's harder to get messages out unless somebody is on Facebook looking for the various posts and so forth. So I think that's a, that's a shame. But at the same point, our budget hearings are, whether they be during the day or in the evening, are, are wide open. There's a binder. You can go and get information. People can easily walk up and ask either of you a question. So there's no real mystery to anyone with a question, as opposed to in some towns, they're not as upfront. They're not available. They conduct business in a different way.
Yeah. Yeah. I have been frustrated and, and you know, some of the bigger projects going in town that despite going through this very lengthy process of getting to town meeting and then getting through town meeting when we're actually there, the folks said, well, I didn't know this was going on.
No, I know.
You know what I mean? And it's frustrating and we try to put the parts and pieces together for everyone, but.
Well, it's, the reality is it's a two-way street. That no one should, you know, have to go find out every bit of information, but it is readily available on our website.
Right.
Or by simply calling the office or by dropping by or whatever means works. I recently got a call from a person who is a member of town meeting and simply had forgotten because of the busyness of life. That I recall it was at the last town meeting or the one before, I knew we dealt with it, but I forgot. The, the whole question of the cemetery expansion.
Right. Yep.
And that was a case where they, they loved to go for walks with their dog and they were caught off guard when they saw some ribbons. And then I mentioned to them that it could very well be this project moving forward. And I think they got in touch with your office. But you know, the first thing about when you're a moderator, you might as well move out of town because you're no longer here, you know, you're not in the building.
Sure.
Couple of times, four times a month. So you don't hear all that of what is exactly coming up.
So I mean, as you've seen in several different municipalities and, and just know of, you know, there's towns smaller than Shrewsbury or the same size that have moved to, you know, council manager, former government, or you know, a different plan within, that's available in the Commonwealth, where they have much smaller legislative body, you know, seven member council. And then you have towns much larger like Brookline that you mentioned than Shrewsbury, who still have open town meetings. So what do you see as the, the benefits or is there any bright lines that say you should switch from one to another in, in all your experience?
You know, it's interesting because I think a couple of towns on the Cape are wrestling with this right now. And I know the island of Nantucket that is having just a horrible time getting people to attend their open town meeting is now reviewing, going to a town manager council, I believe. I think Plymouth is further working on their charter right now as well. You know, that is such an organic, it's organic to the town.
Okay.
I think in 20 years, this place will be a town manager, town council because of its size and its scope. But if, if you look at people who are still really involved in town, they love it.
Sure.
People who go to our town meeting and are the core of that town meeting, they love it, they participate. It's critically important to them in town. When they move on, I'm not so sure that will, will translate to the next level. So I, I suspect within 20 years, 20 years, this place will move. Or is it Franklin?
Franklin.
Is Bellingham down that way? I'm not sure which ones, but there's a few, I think, that are town manager with a council.
Yeah. Franklin definitely is. And then I think recently North Attleboro moved in that direction. So yeah, it is really interesting because again, it has nothing, it has some things to do with size, right? Like Framingham before they became a city were like meeting 14 nights. Like that's no way to conduct any type of business, government or otherwise. So.
No. I think they were the largest town by population in the United States prior to becoming a city.
Interesting. Probably.
But again, 20 years ago, if you had asked me, would they change? Cause I knew some people involved in Framingham. No, not for a good 20, 25 years because there was that core group. They didn't do it for power, they did it for involvement. And I think that's what you see in our group.
Yep.
Where they, they care deeply about the town and they see this as their way of doing it. And you can see that on occasion where you have people who will be strongly for something, people will be strongly against something. And when the vote is finally called, it's unanimous.
Right.
So in other words, they, they had their public discussion and they decided, let's go this way.
Yeah.
So I think that's very interesting.
In some ways it's very efficient, right? It all comes to a head.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
And the, the body in and of itself doesn't want to be there for seven or eight nights. And they see the value of sharing their opinions and making a decision, which is, which is quite good for government once it comes down to that. So.
It's extremely difficult though, to just have the basic level of communication that one needs to run an organization when you have various committees. When I was on the board, I was very, I was never in favor of forming another committee beyond a building committee. Cause then you have good people off working in good faith. And they speak to somebody and they think that person then speaks for the body or something else. And everyone's operating in good faith and no one is being sloppy or mean or anything. It's just the difficulty in keeping people fully apprised of what they need to know. And then the uniqueness of operating government, which basically says, unless you're on TV, you can't talk.
Right.
Because you're, the open meeting law requires that you, you do everything out on either a public meeting taped or untaped. It's not the taped point, I don't believe anymore. And so that's another case where good people will stumble. They didn't realize they couldn't send out this email to everybody.
Right. Yeah.
So you're trying to, there's a constant challenge of, of trying to get the best people you can for a particular project who'll jump in. And then trying to tell them, all right, everything you've known to date at work, put to the side. Because when you come to these meetings, this is where everything has to happen. Call Kevin for a question, but don't send any reply alls or anything to anyone.
Yeah. Because it, you know, the business meetings, the, the real work, it's done after the formal meeting. Right? And the phone calls and the, you know, things like that.
But they can't be.
Right.
A policy setting effort.
Right. Yeah.
Clarification through you. I always, I never talked to my colleagues. It was weird. I would always talk to Dan and then you. And if I had an idea, I would send the memo to Dan, put it on the agenda, we'd discuss it. And then, but, but everything was there so that we never inadvertently stumbled. It's the inadvertent reply to all which gets guys in trouble.
Tell everyone, BCC. BCC is your best friend.
Yeah. Just don't be doing it.
Yeah. And I mean, and even the select board in and of itself, having five separately elected officials that can only operate together as a single body is, is quite different. So. Well, this has been great, Jim. We certainly appreciate you coming in. And your prime time season is just around the corner with town meeting coming up. And we'll have pre-town meeting and your, the finance committee, which you appoint, will be holding a number of, of public hearings. So.
When does that start?
They'll actually be starting in a little less than a month. The last full, the last weekend in March, they'll hold budget hearings. And then the last few days in April, they'll do the public hearing on the entire warrant. So we're just at the outset of that process right now and spit us out in the end will be summer. So.
And what do you think for a number of articles at this point?
I think that right now I'm seeing probably a little bit closer to upper 48. So a little bit, five or six more than maybe normal, but right in the ballpark. So.
Anything big and interesting or for the most part?
Well, one of the things that, that it will be a little bit different is how we approach capital with water. I think our projects are getting too costly to ask the residents to pay in cash for, you know, like water main replacements. You know, it's like 1.8 million dollars a mile now. Like we just can't. Like, we just can't raise the rate enough. So I think we're going to have to ask town meetings consideration of some borrowing.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that'll definitely be a new wrinkle this one.
Now, for this year's town meeting, are you going to do with or without department heads, some of the targeted broadcasts?
We will do that again, yep.
People appreciated that. And I think it really served to inform town meeting members of the specifics. Because if you recall, there weren't a lot of types, those types of questions on such matters.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And when people understand doing it by cash is, is great with, in one respect, particularly as even municipal rates have moved higher. In order to get that cash every year, the impact on the rates is a real challenge.
Right, yeah, and I mean, that's really where we are, you know, do we adjust the water rate by 40%? Or do we adjust it by 3% every year?
Yeah.
Right, like it's, 40% is really hard for folks.
People appreciate avoiding the big ups and downs. They understand over time. But when you have a massive up or a massive down, it, obviously you'll take the massive down. But the massive up really, it, it would almost imply a lack of planning.
Right.
Or there was an emergency situation.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, this is, this has been great. And as we move into town meeting, we'll look forward to those conversations and working through the, the process with you, Jim. Again, thank you for taking the time to come and talk with us on the Town Manager Download. Just remind folks, if they have a question or comment for us or have an idea for an episode, you can reach us at tmdownload@shrewsburyma.gov. So Jim, thanks again for coming. On behalf of Taylor Galusha, I'm Kevin Misakar. Thank you for listening.